Good morning, everyone. I'm Iris Spock. This is the Department of Homeland Security. I'm the Speaker of the Board of Representatives. And I'd like to welcome you here today for our City Council meeting. It's the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. And this is a regular meeting, Thursday, June 6th, and it is 1:00. So, we will start off with our flag salute. And Kofi Annam is going to be leading us in that. But I would like everyone, as you finish this flag salute, to please remain standing because, once again, the tragedy last week in Virginia Beach tears at our hearts and at our very beings. The emotional, physical, and psychological devastation caused by the merciless loss of loved ones is absolutely immeasurable. So let's join in the moment of silence and memory of the lives lost, as well as other lives lost in the same manner, and to honor the victims' bereaved families. Thank you.
Please place your hands where your heart, right in the game.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And will you all please remain standing and watch our screens as we remember and honor this very somber and auspicious day in the world history, the 75th anniversary of D-Day. On June 6th, 1944, 156 soldiers and 11,590 aircraft stormed the beaches of Normandy to end Hitler's reign of terror and attempted annihilation. Almost all of these courageous men and women who fought for liberty and democracy are now gone or in their 90s, but they must always be remembered because they did the unthinkable and accomplished the impossible. They are truly the greatest generation. You may be seated. Thank you. Okay. Kristy, would you please call a roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hobart?
Here.
And Mayor Smotrich?
Here. Okay, well, we have a couple of, we have one presentation at this time, and this is going to be done by Public Safety Update by Captain Michael Stefanoff. And he is from the Highway Patrol of California, and we welcome him to come and speak and give us a little bit of information about the special things that are happening. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, the entire council, for allowing me to come in today. I have a short presentation and then a little follow-up video. When it comes to public safety, we were trying to determine what topic. Well, there's so many, I thought it would be appropriate to give an overview of the Highway Patrol itself, specifically our area here in Indio, in the Coachella Valley, and then show a short video of what we're doing out here now. Okay. So, as many of you may or may not know, the California Highway Patrol has a department that was established in 1929. Those of you who don't know, our mission, basically, our core mission is to save lives. That's what we do out here on a daily basis, to save lives. There are a variety of different methods and achievements, but, and our mission is to provide the highest level of safety, service, and security to everybody throughout the state of California, whether traveling, visiting, or live here. The Highway Patrol itself, a lot of people ask, are you broken up by the north end of the state, the south end of the state, different divisions? So, as you could see, we're eight field divisions throughout the state. The division we are here is Border Division, which encompasses mostly Riverside County, San Diego County, Orange County, and Imperial County. Of those eight field divisions, we have 103 area offices. One specific office is ours here in Indio, and I'll get to that makeup in a moment. So you can kind of see how we're spread out throughout the state. We have 25 communication centers, dispatch centers throughout the state, in addition to 17 commercial inspection facilities, one not too far from here at a Desert Hills facility. Our academy, all of our sworn officers go through 28 weeks of academy training. There's no laterals from one police department to the other. They all start and end in Sacramento through this live-in academy. What we're doing, as far as a department, and specifically in Indio, is we're really trying to get out in the community and show our message. And this is part of why I'm here today, is so we can get public safety statements, we can get information, recruitment. The programs that we could provide to the community, we will put them on different, various social media. I posted ours specifically up there, our Twitter account, our Facebook, and our Instagram account. So what we're trying to do now is also provide the live updates, public safety information, bulletins, traffic concerns, and such. Some of the outreach programs that we have throughout our area with our Public Information Officer, and we could provide to the community, is our Age Well Drive Smart Program for elderly drivers. We have a lot of programs geared towards teen drivers and distracted driving, and motorcycle safety programs, as just a few. I kind of mentioned our core mission of saving lives, and how we kind of judge that, our report card goes by the mileage death rate. Unfortunately, I brought it up to the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, our mileage death rate, as you could see, has increased 28% in just the last five years throughout the state. You can see the alcohol-related fatalities and pedestrian fatalities are up just since 2011, an enormous amount. So what we need to do, as a department, is refocus our enforcement efforts on saving lives in these specific areas. The Indio area, right now, we have two grants through the Office of Traffic Safety that is pending approval through Sacramento. One is geared towards the reduction of fatal collisions throughout the Coachella Valley, and the other is a impaired driver task force that would be funded both by the Office of Traffic Safety. Should those get approved for our area, that provides us additional resources to put out through that grant program. Service, I kind of mentioned our service, the different programs we provide, our dispatch centers, the 25 communication centers throughout the state, over 9 million calls for service a year, and I'll get into our specific dispatch center. We're also the primary law enforcement agency for protection of any state facilities throughout the state, dignitary protection, and employees that are employed throughout the state. We provide that protection as well. Indio area specifically, I'm the commander there. The area was founded in 1952, our office there was relocated in 1993. Just kind of see a snapshot of what we're responsible for. If you kind of take an overview from the 10 freeway, we have from just west of the 62 all the way out to Desert Center along the 10 freeway, and then Highway 177 all the way up to the county line, and SR 62 up to the county line, and then SR 86 down to the Imperial County line. So it's quite a bit of area to cover. Our squad, so our office specifically, is comprised of myself, a lieutenant, we have six supervising sergeants, 48 officers, support staff, and 29 senior volunteers. Additionally, we have a communication center housed at our facility, and that communication center not only dispatches for us, but dispatches for the Blythe, CHP office, the Sangre Gonor Pass, our thermal air operations, our inspection facility, and the Parker Dam resident posts. So all the communications come through our center there. Three supervisors and 22 dispatch operators there.
It is our privilege to serve our golden home out west. We've driven your roads for quite some time. Perhaps you've seen our colors, a shining point of light amid your vast and varied landscape. In the deserts and the forests, from the mountains to the sea, we are many and we are one. You see, the road is a place we call home, a world of asphalt and concrete, rubber and steel. We are boots on the ground, we are wings in the air, two wheels and four. We are blood and sweat, tried and true. We come from every walk of life, and we are many, yet we are one. When you call for help, we'll pick up the phone. We'll find you when you're off the beaten path. We'll hold your hand when you're afraid and tell you things will be all right. We've listened to your stories, and we've heard your cries. We've felt your pain and shared your loss. You give us purpose, and we will give everything to protect you. There are no roads we don't cross, no lives we don't touch, no walls we won't climb, no place we won't protect, no hours we won't work. Our work is the kind that doesn't end. And our reward is each new day. Your trust has paved the way for our success, and our gift to you is a promise of nobility. We will stand watch through the night, through wind and rain and snow and sun. We are black and white, blue and gold. We are many. We are one.
So, really, why I wanted to come today, and thank you, Mayor, again, for extending the invite, is to just kind of show what we do, what we can do. Not, every community's going to have their different ups and downs and have their specific issues, whether it's enforcement seatbelt violations, fatal collisions, DUI problems. And my goal is to come out, I've been the commander here for the past just over a year, is to come out to each and every one communities and find out what the concerns are, what can we address specifically for the different cities throughout the Coachella Valley. So I thought it would be best to give an overview of the different things we provide, and then we can go from there moving forward. I've never worked out in this area, I worked out in Blythe years ago, but for 23 years with the Highway Patrol, this is my first command assignment, and I'm willing and excited to get out in the community as much as I can. So, thanks for having me.
Thank you so much, Captain. I don't think most of us ever realized how extensive the work you do really is and how many people you really touch. So, are there any comments or questions? Yes, Dana?
Just one question. Can you give us some idea of what is in existence now and what is expected to be in existence soon with respect to studying cannabis impaired driving?
Very good.
How, I mean, we, everybody, we've been talking about drunk drivers for decades.
Right.
But is there, are there studies with respect to cannabis impaired driving? And what do you see as far as ascertaining additional information to be able to identify a cannabis impaired driver?
Right. So our officers all go through extensive training, specifically over the past year and a half, they've gone through training, advanced drug recognition training. So not just DUI detection where they get the academy, but they're getting that extra training to observe signs and symptoms of any kind of impairment, whether it's illegal drugs, legal drugs, if they're driving impaired regardless of the source of it, it's the sign and symptoms that we look for.
Do you have any specific statistical data on that subject?
We have a new unit up in Sacramento that works on impaired driving. So, because, so, no, they're looking at statistics on whether or not we have more of this or more of that, yes. But for us, in the field aspect of it, we're making sure our folks are trained to detect any kind of impairment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So actually, there is no number yet, on Dana's question?
Number, as far as?
As far as, like, 39% of the accidents are caused by alcoholic-related, there is no number on marijuana?
It's just, right now, it's impairment-related, so it could be one extent or the other. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Thank you for being here today. It's great to hear about what the CHP is doing out there to protect our lives. Looking at one of our biggest problems in the area seems to be traffic on the 10 on the weekends, when traffic can back up going west from out this way, and you can have four, or five, six hours of backup because of the traffic on leaving the valley, leaving Vegas, the river, and all the associated areas. For a while, there was a, where there was talk about expanding the number of lanes and having emergency lanes when there was an accident on I-10 coming back, rather than have everybody sit out in the traffic for half a day. Is there anything new on getting any relief for traffic running in that direction?
Now, that would be an engineering aspect, so we, as a Highway Patrol, we look at three different things. We look at the education portion of it, the enforcement portion, and then we work with our partners at Caltrans on the engineering side of it. So what we do is we meet with them, they get all our statistical data on collisions, traffic patterns such as that, and then we sit and make recommendations and so forth on the engineering side of it. As far as deployment, what we can control on the enforcement side, as you know, those holiday weekends, those major travel weekends, we have what's called a maximum enforcement period. So, of the officers I have available that aren't on a scheduled vacation, we put out 80% of the available officers on those specific travel days. But as you know, it seems like more and more people are traveling, more and more people are coming through this valley. And unfortunately, specifically where you mentioned, where the 62 and the 111 and the 10 is the choke point from three different areas of the valley into one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much, Captain. We really all appreciate your being here and all the work you do, and just stay safe.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And the last slide has my contact information there, it also has a contact information for our Public Information Officer and our Community Outreach Officer as well. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We will now move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. And the first person on my list is Ernie Santora, and he is from the Chamber of Congress, and he's going to give an update. Hello?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I see Charlie took powder. I thank you all for having us here today. My name is Ernie Santora, I've been on the chamber for the last four years. I'm also Vice President of NFP Insurance, which is the insurance agency that actually insures the chamber. Some of our accomplishments, we had the All Valley Mixer at the Air Museum, it was the largest networking event of the year with all the chambers that were combined, include the LGBT, the Black Chamber and Desert Business Association, there were 20 food vendors, and a record 734 attendants at that Air Museum mixer. We also had a bonus mixer at Bernie's, which was a combined event with the Rancher Mirage Chamber and the Palm Springs Chamber, and we had about 200 people attending that as well, with many new faces that enjoyed networking and coming together. Expedia Cruise Center, grand opening, was a multi-chamber event as well, and one of our attendees won a cruise certificate. We have a Power Lunch at Maracas, Katina, Un de Mayo, largest attended event so far, with 25 people attending. The Business Over Breakfast series has continued, and we now have a certification on serve say for restaurants and managers at no cost to the managers. We have our Taste of Palm Springs coming up, and we really want to thank the City Council for their title sponsorship. We appreciate that so much. It really makes the difference in having a successful event or not. And as far as the details go, I'm going to defer to Rhonda, who really is, she's in the know on all of this. So, without hesitation, Rhonda Henry.
Hello, Rhonda.
Slide correction, it's the Taste of Summer Ranch Mirage.
Right.
And two lovely bracelets that you can...
Absolutely. So we are ramping it up, Taste of Summer Ranch Mirage. We are in the fourth year of this event, and we are going to make it bigger and better than it's ever been. Thank you so much for your support of that and being our title sponsor. Media partners are coming out, and it's going to be an amazing event. We are very excited about it. So far, we have, over 20 restaurants have signed up. Our goal this year is to have 30 restaurants. That's a 3rd% increase over last year, so 30% increase. And then, so far, we have eight nonprofits that are out selling these wristbands for only $10 apiece, and they're right now getting 100% of the proceeds. Any additional, they come in and they get a percentage of those proceeds. Couple of dates to remember is the kickoff mixer will be at Perch, and that will be on July 11th, same mixer that we had last year, same excitement, it's going to be absolutely amazing mixer there. So definitely come out to that. You will need a wristband to get into that mixer. I do have them at the chamber, and/or any of the nonprofits that are listed on the website can sell you a wristband as well. And then, from July 12th through August 18th, six consecutive weekends this year, which is more than it was last year by a week and a half, right? So go out to those restaurants, get $4 specials on cocktails, appetizers, and desserts at the participating restaurants, and all the details are at tastesomerranchmirage.com. Any questions? Let us know.
Questions?
Well, let me just say that the website that you guys are doing is just absolutely beautiful.
Thank you.
And the information there, it really is exquisite, to use a very different word.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're excited.
Any other comments?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and kudos to you, Rhonda, you were the other night at the baseball game, and selling your, very actively, with your flyers and your bracelets. I know we bought two, and...
We did.
We did, yes.
I appreciate you.
And you were out there just beating the band, trying to get them sold. So I wish you all the best, you're doing great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person on our list to speak is Barbara Mortensen, and she is from Ranch Mirage.
Good afternoon to all of you, and thank you for listening to me. I may go about 30 seconds over the three minutes, so I would hope that you would indulge me. I have solar in my house, and this is the second house that I have solar in, so the issue for me is not solar. The issue, once again, is experiences with my electric bills. This past month, I got a bill from SCE that says, it's a settlement bill, which is the annual bill that I'm supposed to pay for anything left over. There's two portions to it. One says amount due 6417, and then if you look further, on another page in the back, it's for the Ranch Mirage Energy Authority, the generation portion, which is $175. I'm not questioning the amounts of it. What I did is I called Southern California Edison to find out, can I pay both of them at the same time? The answer is no. Okay, I said, if I send you the money, what are you going to do with that $175? And they would credit it to their portion of the bill, they will not take the money. So I called Ranch Mirage Energy Authority, and they said that they don't take any money, so I can't pay that bill, so I, and that I need to pay it through Southern California Edison. So I called Southern California Edison again, okay? And they, again, this is like a catch-22, I went back and forth, I spent almost a whole afternoon trying to get what I'm supposed to do. I finally asked for a manager or supervisor at Ranch Mirage Energy Authority, and this is what they told me. Yes, this is a settlement bill, but this is only the settlement bill for Southern California Edison. Next month, you will get another settlement bill. Tell me that this is not confusing for residents in Ranch Mirage. You'll get another settlement bill, and it will be for our portion, okay? And then, Southern California Edison, next month, will be able to take that money that they can't take this month. Tell me that this makes any sense, tell me. I understand what's happening, and I've spoken to Isaiah many times over some issues related to this, but tell me that all the residents in Ranch Mirage really understand this, or that it even makes sense for anybody. When, and, I said, well, if it's a settlement bill next month, you started me in the same month. Southern California Edison cut off their old bill, they started new with me in May, so did Ranch Mirage Energy Authority. Why can't I have a settlement bill if there's two of them at the same time? Well, we didn't send it to them yet, so they can't collect it. Well, why didn't you send it to them yet? There's no answer to that question either. So, it's really very upsetting, and it's a reflection on the city. And if any of you look on Nextdoor, you're going to find many complaints about this, that people are very unhappy about their energy bills because of, I can see your faces, how ludicrous all of this is. It's really ridiculous. The answer that I get when I say that is, well, you can always opt out. I don't think that that's a reasonable answer, and I don't think that that's an answer that should be coming from the city or for Ranch Mirage Energy Authority. And I would appreciate if some more time would be spent on this, okay? Because it behooves all of us as residents of Ranch Mirage to have something that makes sense, that you don't have to explain to people, or that you have to get to a manager or a supervisor or higher up at one place or another to find out what the real issues are. Okay, that's really, it's not, it's not fair to anybody, and it's not fair to the city as well. Also, there's one other issue that I have taken up. On your SCE bill, it always says, your balance last month was X, your current charges are Y, which may be a negative or a positive, and then you have a total balance, which you either have a credit or you have to pay that bill. The Ranch Mirage Energy Authority portion of it only shows a balance forward, which means, as a resident, and in the RMEA... means as a resident, and in the RMEA portion of this, I have to maintain my bills month after month and keep a chart of what my charges were last month so that I can go ahead and either add it or subtract it from this current total to come out with a total. And we've discussed this over and over again. If Southern California Edison can put it on their portion of the bill, there's no reason that it shouldn't be put on the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority portion of the bill. And the answer is they won't do it. Well, if they won't do it, then it behooves you, Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, to send us each a different kind of bill or a letter stating what this is or an email insert if we wanted, but there is no reason that I should have to backtrack month after month to find out and do the addition and subtraction. It's very, very simple, okay? But it's not my job to do that. That should be on the bill. So, I thank you for listening to me, and I'm sorry if I went over the three minutes, but I think you really need to investigate this all over again so that you don't look foolish as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay. Maybe Isaiah can address this a little bit.
Sure. So, we've met with Barbara over the course of the last year, three or four times. We've exchanged emails and phone calls. So, billing is a function of Southern California Edison. So, the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority is the behind-the-scenes function, and Southern California Edison bills. Now, with our net metering customers, how we set up our program is to be the most beneficial to the customer. Their charges are escrowed for a full 12-month cycle. We call that the relevant period, and the reason we do that is it's in the customer's best interest. So, you will get billed for our portion of the bill once a year. It allows that solar system, you as the customer and the person that invested a lot in that solar system, to get the max benefit out of that. Southern California Edison also reads the meters. So, in order for us to relate charges to the customer, we have to wait for the meter data from Southern California Edison, and then that meter data is put against our billing schedule, and then those bills are placed onto the Southern California Edison bill. Because of the timing of it, for our net metering customers, there is a one-month difference between the true-up payments that you get from Southern California Edison and that you get from the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I hope that answers a few questions, and thank you, Barbara.
It really doesn't, because that is the issue. There is no reason for us to get a settlement bill one month and then another settlement bill another month. That's just not right.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming here and making us aware of the problems you've had. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our next speaker, which is Wally Melendez.
That was a long three minutes. On my card, I wrote down education, and I'm going to take up part of my time on that. The state trooper, Mr. Holbert, had a legitimate question, and the state trooper did not answer directly his question. Mr. Holbert was specifically referring to marijuana and the use of it of the drivers, and the state trooper did not answer directly to Mr. Holbert, and he, and he should have. Another thing I want to mention is that a lot of times, or there should be questions from the public at the end of the session when the City Council and the mayor get that presentation, like, for example, from the state trooper, that should be a few minutes for questions from the public. I did have a question, and it referred to the use of marijuana, and of course, is being, or it was being mentioned about being legalized. I've always been against illegal or illegal. And again, I want to say that there was a long three minutes. If everybody is going to abide by the three minutes' time, it should be enforced by the But getting back to my subject, and I have just one minute, is the word indoctrination. From my viewpoint, the high schoolers of today from this area that I've met at, at the college here, at the College of the Desert, come out, and I've mentioned this before about their indoctrination, about how they can join their local college, it being the COD, and become indoctrinated that they, and it's easy to indoctrinate those kids, about that they can only go and get an associate's degree when that's not going to get them anywhere. They, they should be indoctrinated that when they finish high school, that first they're freshmen, and then they're sophomores, and then they're juniors, and then they're seniors. So, that's where they should be indoctrinated, on not that they should just attend their local college, which is the College of the Desert, for just two years and dwell on, on the word "associates" when they should be dwelling on freshmen, sophomore, junior, and senior. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that ends the portion of our council meeting dealing with non-agenda public comments, so we will now move on to City Council comments, and we'll start with Ted.
Thank you, Iris. Coffee with the Cop is an important event that establishes a rapport between the residents and Rancho Mirage law enforcement. These events are held several times a year, and I sincerely look forward to each one as I get to know the officers and the residents who attend on a more personal level. This last event was held at the newly opened Krispy Kreme. What a huge bonus. I see Lieutenant Manning back there that had the pleasure of chatting with at this event. The children who attended had the thrill of sitting on the motorcycle, turning on the siren, and dreaming of a future career while their mothers took their pictures. And many residents now look forward to greeting the sheriff and the city officials they had previously met during one of these coffee outings. Events like this create community and promote openness, the key to a successful city. It is very important that we continue to be sensitive, listen intently, and respond with actions to the needs expressed by our constituents, and this event is a perfect forum to converse. If you missed this last one, don't worry. Another Coffee with the Cop event will be announced soon. As I left the Krispy Kreme facility and returned to City Hall, I drove past the up-and-coming and extremely successful Del Webb Development on Donna Shore. I noticed that the power lines had been undergrounded. After having just enjoyed a delicious donut, now looking forward at the beautiful unobstructed mountainscape, I began to contemplate what Jenny and I were going to be doing for dinner. And then I remembered it's Restaurant Week, which we just heard about. The Greater Palm Springs Restaurant Week continues through this weekend, officially ending on Sunday. Many of the Rancho Mirage favorites are participating, so be sure to plan your weekend by going to the new city website. You will find more information on the Greater Palm Springs Restaurant Week link under the featured events by scrolling down the homepage or going to dine gps.com. Now, these are just some of the events that took place this past week. It shows how active we are as a community. Coffee with the Cops is a regular and a terrific opportunity to get to know our law enforcement. And of course, the things that are going on in our city are magnificent. The undergrounding that we continue to do make our city extremely beautiful. And so, all I can say is the cachet of the 922-70 zip code continues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Richard, did you have something to say?
Thank you, Iris. Wink link?
Wink link.
Got it this time. Well, good afternoon, everyone. One of the events that Ted was talking about occurred last week, or this last Tuesday, actually, and our city celebrated the Rancho Mirage Night at the ballpark. It was attended by a large number of residents and also employees who brought their children, had a great time. There was also a bounce house and as well as things like the, well, let's see, the bounce house and the snow cone factory. So, we had great weather, and we watched our own Ted Wild throw out the first ball. Ted, you want to stand up and throw another one out?
Well, I think I'll rest. Thank you.
The Power Baseball Team is a group of collegiate players who traveled from around the country to play baseball in the summer months in the Coachella Valley. Very talented young men who come from all the areas. We had one player from Japan, others coming from colleges and universities from around the U.S. The excitement ended with a win for the home team. Yay, Ted.
Yes.
Okay. Smiles from all the children and a great sense of community. I invite you to all come out, watch the Palm Springs Power. Over the next few weeks, they play almost every night in Palm Springs, and you'll really enjoy seeing this young group of players that are coming up and eventually will be playing in the larger stadiums around the country. So, thanks for attending, those of you who did. Sure you had a great time, and thanks for Marcus and Jess for putting together this port, this item. So, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. Moving on, Charlie or Dana?
Which one do you want?
Charlie first.
Well, then I, then I will take it over. I am so impressed with the recent show brought to us by Lamone Carr Desert Theatricals, and you're looking at the picture right there. The Pirates of Penzance was the first time that a bit of Broadway theater has come to the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater, and it sure was a great hit. The shows were held on Friday, May 17th and Saturday, May 18th, and the weather and productions were just fabulous. Look at that crowd. At this first of many Broadway theater dining experience, there was both general seating as well as the upgraded table dining options. And I, and I see that, go back to that picture, please. Look at that, look at that great table. Look at that handsome councilman just sitting there observing all of this.
Where?
Let's see, where, where?
Where's the handsome one? Where?
I don't see Dana in that picture.
Where? I don't, where?
I didn't see Ted. Where, where is he? Well, I thought he was there. Delicious food and cocktails were available from Wally's Desert Turtle for those who purchased the table options. A full-service dining experience was available from the special Broadway in the Park menu. The performance itself was beyond all expectations. The costumes, the lighting, the vocal ranges and sets were all just perfect, and there was also, that was an entire cast of 20 professional people. The production was directed and choreographed by Ray Lamone, with Joshua Carr as both musical director and musicians. The website Broadway World gave it an outstanding review, stating, "The entire production was first-rate, and the eight musicians were top-notch and had a sound as a full orchestra." There were also raffle tickets available for purchases and resulted in one lucky winner receiving a season pass to the next year's series, and an outstanding $700 went to and donated to the Children's Discovery Museum in Rancho Mirage. It was really an amazing show. Ray and Josh have significant experience with over 350 professional Broadway-style musicals between them over the last 25 years, and now they can add yet another show to their great list of success. I sincerely look forward to the many wonderful things to come with Lamone Carr. This November, there is a children's theater series, which is a first, and it's in the works in conjunction with the Rancho Mirage Library. We will also have another wonderful holiday show at the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater, and an additional four, let me say it again, four shows in the spring starting. Tentative titles will be, are you ready? Cole Porter's Tap Extravaganza, Anything Goes, Roger and Hammerstein's A Grand Night for Singing, featuring the music of Oklahoma, South Pacific, Carousel, King &amp; I, and much more. The Smash Abba Musical, which is now touring and is a raving success across the United States. Mama mia, mama mia. That's my Italian kicks in, so forgive me for that. Couldn't help it. And that is going to be the Broadway star David Burrem in Mostly Broadway. In the coming weeks, Lamone Carr will be able to publicly announce the 2019-2020 season. You will not want to miss this, so be sure to check often for the release of the official schedule and to purchase tickets. Again, I just want to say how excited I am at both the success of the recent shows and our new partnership, Lamone Carr, and for this fabulous, wonderful, new use of our outstanding, beautiful amphitheater. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Charlie. Wow, what excitement's going on here.
There is. It certainly is.
All right. Dana, did you have any comments?
Well, I did, but after listening to all of this.
Really?
I think I'll just do the public a favor. No comments.
Is that because your picture wasn't there?
Okay. Well, I'll move on to my comments, because we are certainly busting out with incredible events and fun times in Rancho Mirage. There's been a lot of improvements in recent events going on in our city, and we do not want you to miss anything. So, if you have not been receiving traffic alerts, mayor's messages, Speaker Series notifications, or other information, please tune to your junk mail or your spam mail, and maybe you can do the following. You can add to your address book so that you can ensure that you will be receiving it. Put it in your mail, email box, and noreply@ranchoemirage.gov. That is, noreply@ranchoemirage.gov. You can see it on the screen, I believe, and it's easier to do than it sounds. If you aren't subscribed to receive notifications, it is a simple project and a process. It sounds complicated, but if you have difficulty, just call City Hall. You can navigate to the newly updated city of Rancho Mirage's website and click on the eNews signup in the upper right-hand corner. You will be directed to a page with options to select what you wish to hear, and you can get as much news you want as you want or as little as you desire. Also, if you are fortunate enough to attend one or all of the 2019 Speaker Series VIP receptions and had photos taken by our professional photographer with the speakers, you can access those photos on the new website as well. So, to view and download your photos, simply navigate to the Residents dropdown menu by hovering your cursor... by hovering your cursor over the word Resident on the home screen under the subsection Culture and Recreation. Then click on Special Events. Scroll to Speaker Series and click Learn More. There you will find links to photos from all three of the VIP receptions and you can download them to your heart's desire. And if you've gone through all that and you still are confused, you can do what I do and just call the Rancho Mirage City Hall and ask for some help. We have lots of people here that are more than glad to help you. And if you'd like to be notified when the 2020 Speaker Series lineup is announced and when the tickets go on sale, you can do it by any one of those measures. And again, make sure to sign up to receive email notifications by subscribing through the link offered on the Speaker Series or go through eNews icon on the homepage and described, what was described earlier. So, after all that, there's just one last thing I wanted to mention and that is the season has become hotter as we feel every day and it will continue to become hotter. And if you continue to want to do your hiking, please do yourself a favor. Know where to hike and how to get there. Let people know that you're going to be gone a certain length of time. Pick up the Parks and Recreation Trails map from City Hall and be sure to stay hydrated. And this is the little map, you can just stick it in your pocket. It opens up, lots of information falls out and when you get to the main page, it is the map. So, you won't have any trouble, you'll know where you're going, the, all the different parks are described, so you can have a good time. But if hiking outside in this hot weather is not your thing, you can always get your exercise by going to our Rancho Mirage Library and you can do the Walking with the Stars and that's held almost every day. And it is in the community room, but you need to really go on the website, find out the exact days and times. And if you have any questions there also, please feel free to call our library. They'll fill you in on all the details. It's 760-341-7323. And that about does it for me. So, we are going to be moving on next to our city manager's comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You know, when the city started down the path of building an observatory that was connected to our library, it was really an educational facility focused on public outreach and that facility has brought many exciting opportunities to the city of Rancho Mirage and the Coachella Valley as a whole. And this summer, we will have a new team member with us. So Erin and Annie, why don't you work your way up? Annie will be our summer intern and Erin is here to talk a little bit about Annie.
As our librarian.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. As Isaiah said, we are very excited at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory to have our very first observatory intern. Annie is coming to us to work on our outreach and help us continue to get the, our community message out. So several of the projects she'll be working on is she will be assisting Eric with our stargazing events. She will also be helping us kind of launch our astrophotography program. And in addition to that, she'll be helping us from a third, or from an outside perspective, look at our policies and procedures and really help us define what the observatory is about and our community outreach. So, I'm very happy to announce or introduce Annie Poit.
Thank you so much Erin for that introduction and thank you for having me, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm so excited to be here for this summer. I just finished my second year at Claremont McKenna College. I'm majoring in physics with a concentration in astrophysics. And last summer, I worked on a joint project between Pomona College and NASA's Jet Propulsion Laboratory, tracking near-Earth asteroids and characterizing their orbits so that we know if we're in danger. But this summer, I wanted to take what I've been learning in my classes and apply it more to being able to articulate exactly what's going on up there and really reach out to the community and get other people excited about astronomy. So, in looking for observatories that could fit that bill, the Rancho Mirage Observatory came up and it seems so far like it's a perfect fit for me. I've been on several tours and helped Eric out with some stargazing events so far and they've just been amazing and I know that I'm going to learn so much. So, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members for this wonderful opportunity and having this lovely city that I can come enjoy your heat in. Thank you.
And thank you Erin also. Any questions from the council?
Good.
Okay. All right. Take care and we'll look forward to hearing more good news. Okay, moving on to the minutes. And these minutes contain two sets of minutes. One is for May 16th, 2019, for a regular meeting and the other one is May 28th, a special meeting, which was the budget study session. So.
Of the May 18th regular meeting minutes.
May 16.
You're, Richard, you're including both?
I'm sorry. May 16th regular meeting and May 28th special meeting.
Okay, Richard has made a motion and Ted has seconded it. Please vote.
And motion carries 5-0.
Thank you Christie. All right, now we'll move on to the consent calendar and this, of course, will be handled by our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. You have nine items for consideration on your consent calendar today. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1153, repealing Chapter 2.34 Historic Preservation Commission from the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. And we established that commission via resolution like the rest of our commissions. Item number three is a resolution establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal year 1920. This is commonly referred to as the GAN limit. It has no practical application for the city of Rancho Mirage, but it is a requirement to approve it. We are 64.6 million under the appropriations limit. Item number four is the final acceptance of the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory Boiler Upgrade Project. That's CP 18-344. Item number five is the final acceptance of the citywide rubberized crack ceiling project. That was CP 19-345. Item number six is a special assistance fund award to one qualified nonprofit in the amount of $5,000. Item number seven are your annual contracts for fiscal year 1920. Item number eight are demands and Steve will summarize item number nine.
Thank you Isaiah. So, the last council meeting, the city council met in closed session under labor negotiations when an unrepresented employee, and it was directed by the council as a council's designated labor negotiator to present an offer to increase the city manager's annual salary to $240,000 with his remaining compensation package remaining the same. So I presented the offer to the city manager and accepted. As such, I prepared a first amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, which is included in today's agenda package for the city council's approval. Now, for the record, I want to point out that this oral report is being provided pursuant to Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), which requires that an oral summary be provided for any proposed recommendation to change the salary or compensation package of an executive employee before the council takes final action on the proposed change. I just also want to point out that Isaiah also serves as, in addition to serving as city manager for the city of Rancho Mirage, he serves as Executive Director for the successor agency, the Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency, Executive Director for the Rancho Mirage Housing Authority, Executive Director for the Rancho Mirage Finance Authority, Executive Director for Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, Executive Director for Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory and all the Rancho Mirage Community Services District. So he does a lot of work. So if, so if approved, the only change in the city manager's salary and compensation package will be to increase his annual salary to $240,000 commencing May 19, 2019.
Well, thank you so much Steve. Okay. We've taken now care of all the consent calendar items, one through nine. May we have a, pardon me?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a, a motion by Dana and a second by Charlie. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we are now moving on to something very special and this is a special appearance by Dr. Sandra Lyons. She is the supervisor of the Palm Springs Unified School District and she's going to give us somewhat of an update and some information and consideration of Palm Springs Unified School District's funding request to provide substance education and treatment for students and parent education. Welcome, Dr. Lyons. It's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Glad to be back. Council members, city manager and staff, thank you for having us. Before I launch into the, look at where we are right now and where we hope to be in the future, it's been almost a year since I stood before you, I'd like to allow my board president, Richard Clapp, to say a few words.
I'm very short. I want to thank you folks. Last year, you took a chance and you gave us $100,000 of your money for us to do something with it in regards to drug education in our school district. You're going to hear in a minute what we did. We think we're doing a good job. We think we're on the right track. There are just some times when our county government and state government and federal government just can't get it done and we have to do it ourselves. And so, I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you and you are welcome.
Thank you. So I believe we have a PowerPoint and it's, as I said, about a year ago, I stood in front of you and talked about our vision in Palm Springs Unified to bring drug education to our students. And we talked about the idea that at that point, the adult use measure had passed and already in my short time in Palm Springs Unified, I saw a high level of substance abuse, suspensions and expulsions and I had concerns that we would see more after the adult use was passed because what happens is those drugs become more available and prevalent in homes. And in addition, the cannabis, cannabis piece in particular, because there are medicinal uses, sometimes students and/or adults are confused about the impact on students. And so, we came to you saying Prop 64 monies are not going to come through anytime soon, if ever, and we really want to get out ahead of this. We don't have the ability right now, the revenue, the state hasn't given us any additional funds to do that and we really want to be sort of a, a front leader in this. And Rancho Mirage, and I asked you at that time to be that lamplighter, to be those folks that were out front and said, "This is a call to action for all the cities, cities in our community to really support the youth today." And you did that and it worked and so we are extremely grateful. Your $100,000 then led to two other $100,000 contributions from the city of Palm Springs and Cathedral City. And with that money, we were able to get started. And so, what I'd like to do today is tell you where we are, give you a full accounting of the data we have to date. Because I was here about a year ago, it took us several months to get things in place. So I'm just going to have you indulge me and I'll kind of take you on a little walk on where we've been through that last year. So as you know, that, that started about a year ago. We had all of you come on board and agree that it would be something worthy of doing. And with the money that we got initially from the three cities, we, and you'll see an itemized budget in a minute, we purchased Sunny Story, which is actually the program that we use in fourth grade, and Courage to Speak, which isn't listed here, but it's the companion piece that's used in sixth and ninth grade. And the curriculum was picked by our school psychologists and our counselors because it's research-based and it's used nationwide. And I'm going to read you some testimonials, so you'll get a little flavor of what the students are getting out of that in just a minute. We started about midway this year. By the time the materials arrived and we had the opportunity to do training of staff and hire the substance abuse counselor, it was about midway through the year. We are doing the education in grades four, six and nine. Starting this year, 1920, everything will be up and running from the very first day of school, so we know that will be an advantage. There was a little bit of compression in delivering the curriculum this year. I do want to point out that we have hired, and you'll see that in the budget, a full-time substance abuse counselor. And the sad part and the good part is that young woman is busy. So we have enough students who are having trouble with use and/or abuse of substances, of controlled substances, that coming on board, her plate was full from the beginning. And I'll talk a little bit more about how she gets her students in a second. So when I first came to you, I said the data point that I would be looking at the most would be the reductions in our suspensions and ultimately expulsions. And you know, the state now is monitoring this and looking at us to see, are we doing things to improve that, even though they don't usually give us the dollars to, we call those unfunded mandates and we have a lot of them in education. But I can tell you that already, we have reduced the number. We just think, we don't want to use that as much of a data point at this point because it wasn't even a full year that we had all those pieces in place. And you can see for the, we have two different kinds of suspensions and we have expulsions and one is really for just the possession and the other is for selling. And so what we want you to see is that in eight, 17, 18, we had 410 students and when this data was collected at the end of May, about 336 students. We do believe we'll end up a little bit under what we did last year because tomorrow's the last day of school. So we've already seen and heard those suspensions and expulsions, but we can't tell if this is actually impactful. I will share with you that we did have a high school student, our board meets in closed sessions to hear the recommendations for expulsions. And one young man who was in ninth grade, they, we asked him, one of the board members said, "Is there anything that we could have done that would have prevented you from being here in front of us today facing expulsion from school?" And he actually said, "You know, just a short time ago, I started having this drug education on campus. I don't know if you guys are responsible for that, but it's really good and I wish I'd have had it earlier." So, it kind of gave us all goosebumps because here is a young man who's facing expulsion from school, who actually, even in the midst of where he was with all of this, recognized that that education was powerful and, and helpful for him. I'm not going to read the whole teacher testimonial, you'll have to pack it, but I just wanted to draw your attention to the end. This is one of our fourth grade teachers and in that last paragraph, she said, "I had an extremely positive experience with this curriculum. It definitely made talking about something difficult much easier with my students. I was impressed with their maturity and insights on drugs. Without this curriculum, our conversations may have been more awkward. I hope to be able to use this curriculum next year with my students." Our teachers have a lot on their plates and so we really do need to support them, not only with curricular materials, but the, the education to do that. And this isn't territory that you get training in, in your curriculum and instruction classes. So we're really glad to be able to provide this for our staff. This is one of our students who said, "The sessions have helped me to stay away from drugs and to remain calm at serious moments such as arguments. Staying calm and communicating the way I feel towards a problem is much more effective rather than blowing up and bursting your temper towards others. I learned to use other coping skills instead of drugs." I do think one of the things we see with our younger substance users and abusers is they are often self-medicating and so they have other kinds of social emotional issues that have not yet been addressed. And so helping him or her recognize that is really important. We still need to work on the word sessions because that's what seasons is supposed to be, but if you read it as the student intended it, this is a fourth grader who says, "The sessions helped me focus more and start new hobbies. The sessions also helped me with slowly stopping smoking. The sessions were fun and helpful." We have students who are dabbling in all kinds of things at all grade levels. And finally, this one, I won't read all of it, but he also talks about coping with my use of cannabis. And I think for our students, cannabis in particular, has become very routinized. They're using it a lot and as we talked about last time, what we know about the developing brain is you are four to six times as likely to have a substance abuse problem as an adult if you start when, before the age of 15. And so we're really trying to prevent students from using at that age. And he says, "I choose to continue, after my eight weeks, for, chose to continue for more support on my journey to a healthier life." This is a student who was referred to the substance abuse counselor as a result of disciplinary actions and then voluntarily continued with our substance abuse counselor because he knew that he had a concern. So, gives you a little bit of a taste, fourth through high school, of what we're doing with our students. We had budgeted $300,000 based on the city's contributions. To date, we've spent about $191,000. We have a little bit of carryover there. And as I told you, it's partly because we only were able to implement for half of the year and we're still evaluating the effectiveness. Going forward though, here's what we'd like to do. We want to have more than a one-year plan and you all know how difficult it is to, in education, all the time, we get one-time money every year. I call that ongoing, but we don't get to plan that way. So what we'd like to do is really be able to plan for an ongoing program. So our mental health therapist, who is our substance abuse counselor, is about $100,000. There's an ongoing cost for the curricular materials because many of them are what we call consumables. The students write in them, take them home, there's literature for them to read. And then the mileage, because our substance abuse counselor- And then, the mileage, because our substance abuse counselor actually travels from school to school to make it easier for the students to receive those services. So, if you look on what we asked from all of you and what we got, was that money. To go forward, and I think I'll go back, sorry, for 1920, it's a little over $100,000, and for 2021, a little over $100,000. You already saw that we had carryover, so if we were able to receive $35,000 from each of our cities, that allows us, for two years, to do exactly what we're doing right now. The big investment was initially that $125,000 that we had to go upfront with to get the materials. Now, we have them, it's just that ongoing cost. But this actually allows us to sustain. I will tell you, and I asked his permission, I saw Scott Mattis this morning at an event, and I did say, "Hey, Scott, I'm going to Rancho Mirage to talk to the city council. Desert Hot Springs hasn't contributed yet." And he said, "Tell them it is in the budget. I'm 90% sure it's going to pass." So, we're hoping that in addition to the $35,000, we're actually going to ask Desert Hot Springs for a little more money, so that we can hire an additional counselor, if possible. And the other part for us that we have not done as well as we'd like is the parent education piece. That's also going to take some resources, but we know we need our parents to understand the importance of keeping drugs and alcohol away from their students. With that additional partnership, we're also looking at two things that I just wanted to mention to you. We have, and eventually, I'd like to talk to our city managers about how we do it. One is, is there a way to leverage resources for our adults in our community to really be educated and learn about the effects of cannabis and other substances on the developing child brain? We get our parents in, they really want to talk about educational issues. It's harder sometimes, so that's a concept that I'd like our cities to explore. And the other part is an education campaign that could be regional, that would really figure out a way to help people understand that we're not talking about adult use, we are talking about youth use, and how can we have something that's a snappy, catchy message that we could put up everywhere, that would be a visual and a printed representation that would help educate our adults about the risks for the youth in our community? So, we know it's another commitment we're asking you for, but we think it's really worth the dollars, because for $35,000 for each of our cities for two more years through the end of 2021, we'll have a consistent approach to educating and supporting our students. And I will take questions.
Very good.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do. Can you explain the lack of support from the other cities? And I'm sure you give a great presentation. What could they possibly say to not want to support this? And I assume, by what you're saying, money-wise, that there are different levels that they can give to you?
So...
Doesn't have to be 100, or...
No, we asked everybody, so let me, yeah, thank you for that question, council member. Initially, we asked each of our four cities for $100,000. Three of them participated, and one city did not, Desert Hot Springs. At the time, they said they did not have the money in the budget. Even still, they're not sure they can do the $100,000. So, for the sustain, we used the money that we got from the three to do the pilot year here and to buy the bulk of the curricular materials. So, to sustain it for two more years, what we simply did was divide those costs between the four cities, and we are asking Desert Hot Springs, we have a little different proposal for them to fund the other pieces.
So, you are going back and saying that there could be other options for these other cities to help you with this program?
Yes.
Which would help them and their schools and their kids?
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
What is your experience? What have you found with respect to the difference? You indicated expulsions. There have been 410 since the new legislation, and so, that would be for a period of what, about a year?
About a year.
What was your experience prior to that with respect to expulsions? In other words, comparing before marijuana was legal to prior to that time?
Definitely, our recommendations for expulsion are up, and so, that definitely has happened. I will say one other piece that the Board of Education, I have two of my board members here, I also have board member Karen Cornet in the audience. We have been working as a school district, as many have. There's no longer an option for us to have a zero-tolerance policy. So, while the recommendations for expulsions are up, we're not expelling as many, we're trying to provide other support services, and still, many of them are expelled. So, that's why I don't want to be too tight on the data right now, because we didn't have this in effect for an entire year. We really do believe, and that's why the two-year piece for me is really important, because I do think you need two continuous years to really say, "This program had an impact." Because we'll be able to do a couple of things. We'll be able to look at the students from fourth through sixth grade after two years of the program and determine if that's had any impact, which, right now, we can't really tease out. So, we're having students who are referred for expulsion, who may have never had drug education. So, if we have a 12th grader or an 11th grader who's being recommended, we in our system have not provided any of that education. So, I'll be able to drill down a little bit better to see students who've actually received, and whether or not those students are being recommended at the same rate for the same kinds of issues as students who have not had that education.
What are you observing to be the most effective tool in causing deterrence?
Yeah.
Part of the children?
I really think at this juncture, it is education. I think, you know, and I think the young man's testimony to the board in closed session that he had never had anybody talk to him about drug education was powerful, because we just asked him apropos of nothing, with no ability for him to prepare, "If we could have done anything for you to prevent you from being here, what would it have been?" And he said, "I would have had that drug education a long time ago that I just got a few weeks ago." So, I do think the educational piece is key, but I'll go back to the idea that I do think the parent education and the community education piece is also really important. There are a lot of adults that are involved in our students' lives, who are not necessarily coming to parent meetings or involved in our school system. So, the more as a community that we wrap around that education piece, and people are really aware in their conversations with young people, with their nieces, their nephews, their grandkids, I think the better off we are. I just think a lot of times, parents really do not understand what we know about drugs and the effect on the developing brain in a way that 30 years ago, we did not understand.
In the expulsion, how long is that period, or does it vary?
It varies. It really depends on the student's individual history, their other infractions, whether they were selling, how much substance they had on them. I will say, this has nothing to do really with my presentation today, but the other confounding piece for us are vape pens and the ability of vape materials, because students are now also vaping illicit substances, and that's a whole other issue we have to crack that we're really just kind of peeling the layers back on.
I think it's a wonderful program that you're trying to put together, or have put together, forgive me, and looking for the next year, but it does disturb me to think that there are other cities who don't see the benefit of what you guys are doing. It's not that they can't afford a few dollars, and I'll be very crude and say, "Throw at you."
I agree with you, and I do at least feel happy that the mayor did say publicly, you may say that you spoke with me today, I do believe their intent going forward really is to do that. And we met Board President Clapp and I with the mayor and the city manager there, and I've been told that they are planning on that expenditure. The other thing I did want to let you know, and Christie said we could hand this out later, I left a governing brief for you from California School Boards Association, which is the association our board members belong to. And I think one of the things that it talks about in here is, as school boards plan for this, one of the things that they should look at is partnering for taxation to support drug education. And I know that's not the way our community goes and really wants to look at. So, I really appreciate our board being willing to say, "What could we do to partner with our cities?" And I can't, you know, really request of any of you that you do anything to support us, because we do have our own revenues and we do have our own funding. But this isn't funded right now by the State of California for Education, and it actually says in this brief, it's probably never going to be funded. But if we get this piece in place and we have that ability, we'll be able to go forward and carry it. We couldn't initiate it, I did not have the resources to initiate it. And I also think the statement to the community at large is that this is everybody's concern is very powerful, and so, I really do appreciate your support to that end.
Thank you. Any questions, Dan?
Yeah. I echo Charlie, your comment about the other cities, disappointment in not participating, and I concur with that. That's the reason that I was so pleased, and I commented about this before tonight's meeting, that we were able to step forward initially and to, in effect, start the momentum, and as a result of that, attract two other cities to follow us. And I think if we do the same, hopefully, not only will we have the same cities, but it'll be expanded this year, because now you have a success story to promote. So, congratulations, and I look forward to your continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, did you have a comment?
Question?
Yes.
You just briefly commented a few minutes ago about the likelihood of the funding coming from the state. Is that something that can change based on what we do in making programs available like this? Or what's going to make the state turn around and recognize the value of this program?
Well, I do think that that is a piece of it. So, in the brief, it talks about with Prop 64, ultimately, most of those dollars are going to go to the Department of Public Health, and then, if there are any dollars left over, based on whatever they do, then those dollars would go back to the CDE and then be determined how they would be distributed to local educational agencies like ours. Here's what I, I think that what we can do is, if we have success, it's really something that is powerful to the state board, to be able to see what can work. And I do think, if we're able to do something that ultimately, isn't that cost prohibitive, it looks like something then that resources can be put to. And I think if you look at our budget and what we've been able to do over the first year, and could do for three years, really, with not too much money for a district with 22,000 students in it, I think that's quite a lot. So, that is the hope, and I do hope, you know, electeds and our voters actually continue to lobby the state for that funding, because this is something we elected to do, and we make no judgment about what adults do. We just want to make sure that whatever is done, we protect our students.
Okay. That's it. Okay, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Number one, what are the other districts doing? And what kind of progress are they making? And are they using a similar program, if at all?
No. And so, I do have other districts who are calling me, asking me what we're doing. So, I do think, again, we're going to be, I'll probably be asking some members from Rancho Mirage to be able to talk about what we're doing at some of the presentations that will happen in the next year or two, as we get some success. Other districts aren't doing anything, and I think that's what you heard our students say, you know, if I had had this a couple of years ago. Most districts are in the same boat. I've been in public education over 30 years. We did DARE a long time ago, and since then, there has really been nothing that has been formally adopted or used that wasn't just embedded within the health curriculum. So, the two things I will say that are distinct about this, it's not embedded anywhere, it is an explicit intentional curriculum strictly around drug use and abuse, and that is separate from what we've done for many, many years. The other piece is the substance abuse counselor. So, a lot of districts have mental health. They don't have one person who is devoted simply to and highly trained in that work. And I think those two pieces are something we're hoping can become a model for the state.
Okay, so now, when you talk about the other districts, are you speaking primarily of the Coachella Valley or statewide?
Statewide.
Okay, so, nobody statewide?
Not that I'm talking to, or, you know, I'm not going to speak. There are lots of tiny little districts and big districts, and I've served in urban and rural and suburban rural in the state of California, and I have not seen it done, nor have I talked to any colleagues. So, both of my colleagues in the Coachella Valley are watching what we're doing, because we do meet regularly and are eager to hear how it works.
Okay, and then, you mentioned about grades, is that four through six?
Fourth grade, no, we're only doing three years.
Four, six, and nine.
Right. This allows us really entry points, because the curricular materials are rather expensive initially, so that got us three grade levels.
Okay, and so, for the student who is new to a school, do they fall into a particular category where there is special...
That's a great question, and I will ask our executive director, because I don't know if they're doing any sort of makeup work with new students in the fifth grade year.
If you get somebody that just suddenly comes in on the seventh grade?
Right.
Or the eighth grade, you know, what do they do?
Right.
And...
That's a great point.
Do you give us an example of how many hours are spent in training these kids or giving information or education? And do they, do they express their thoughts about whether they're too young or too old by that point to have this education?
Right. So, the fourth grade Sunny Story is told through the eyes of a dog, so it's developmentally appropriate. And I think I mentioned earlier, our school psychologists are the ones who chose these materials, because they believed they were developmentally appropriate. They looked at national programs. And so, I think the fourth grade teacher is a good example in her testimony about why she thinks it works. It's not threatening, it opens up the door for conversation. I think the good thing about it is, it's not explicit enough that it opens up students' eyes to things that they haven't been exposed to, but it's direct enough that students are then, this is what I've also heard anecdotally from teachers, kids will approach them after the lesson and say, "Can I tell you about something that's happening?" And so, it opens up enough idea of what drug use is, what it looks like, why it may not be appropriate for young people that they're doing that. In sixth and ninth grade, it's a little bit different. It's Courage to Speak, so there are some pieces of it that are about explicitly the physiological impacts, but a lot of that is really coping skills. And so, again, developmentally appropriate. If you're a sixth grader and you're with older kids and they're, you know, enticing you to do something, how do you have the desisting skills in that particular targeted setting? And also, helping kids understand the emotions that they might want to suppress with drug or alcohol use or substance use, that they can also do something else with. So, explicitly targeted to how kids are using substances or are in situations where substances are there, giving them those strategies.
So, are these taught in a typical assembly-type environment?
No.
With a mess, or is each teacher...
They're in a classroom.
Okay, so, each teacher has the educational program that she deals with?
Right. And we're also teaching our counselors, our counselors are trained, so sometimes there's a setting where a teacher may not be comfortable, for whatever reason, delivering that curriculum. So, we do have, our counselors are able to come into that classroom setting of 25 or 30 and deliver the lesson, and then, it's ongoing.
Okay, thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
Okay. Yeah. No, absolutely. Isaiah?
Dr. Lyons, I just wanted to thank you. I've heard you speak about this program and at the state of the district on a couple of occasions, and I think part of the success that the district is seeing and the difference in these kids' lives is a direct result of you, your passion for them, and taking the initiative to get this program started in the absence of the state doing anything. Obviously, part of the public message when Prop 64 was passed was that there would be money available to our schools to face these type of issues. We're not the first state to legalize adult use of marijuana, and youth use went up because access went up.
That's right.
So, I applaud you and your effort. I think this program is great. I think that you do a fantastic job for our school district, and I just wanted to thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for all you do, we appreciate you.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing. Okay, if there are no more questions, may I have a motion? Oh, yes. Are there any comments from the members of the audience? Comments, questions? Anything? Saying none? We'll close the council, the community comments, and we'll move on to the vote.
All right, then, I will make the motion.
Yes, it is. It's properly agendized.
Yeah, it is.
It is agendized. It was item number 21 on the agenda, and we moved it up.
Moved it up.
Yeah. All right, so then, I'll make a motion at the Palm Springs. Let's see, how would we do this, Isaiah?
So, if the council wanted to support the program again, the school district is requesting $35,000. So, it would be the city council...
All right, that's the motion that I will make.
And I'll second that.
What happened to that? Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Lyons, and thank you for all you're doing. Okay. All right. We will now move on to the public hearings and item number 10. And this is going to be presented by Joy Tsai. She is Associate Planner, and the subject matter is "Consideration of a One-Year Extension of a one-year extension of time for tentative tract map 33329, TTM3X33329, which contains, consists of a 4.77-acre parcel to be subdivided into nine single-family residential lots. And the project is located on the east side of Via Josephina and north of Ginger Rogers. This is the third and final request for an extension of time for this tentative tract map. And thank you so much, Joy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, council members. The following request is for a one-year extension of time for tentative tract map 33329. This is their third and final extension of time request for this tentative map. So as you can see on the slide, the subject property is located at the east side of Via Josephina, just north of Ginger Rogers Road in Section 30. This project was originally approved by the city council in May 2006 and received one-year time extensions in 2008 and last year in 2018. The tentative tract map was kept entitled through various bills that was passed by the state. The applicant cited economic slowdown with development as the main reason for their extension request. The subject property lies in the very low residential density zoning district, or RL2 zone, which has a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet. The design of this subdivision is typical of other subdivisions in the area in that it is comprised of a private cul-de-sac street that extends through the center of the project and serves each lot. The approved lot sizes range from approximately 15,000 to 17,000 square feet and although, and do not meet the current minimum lot size. Since this is the final extension of time permitted for this map, unless the map is recorded, it will expire, and any new submittals will need to comply with the current development standards. The landscape plan for this proposed project is shown on the slide and was presented to the planning commission and the city council during their previous extension of time request last year. The project has been conditioned to comply with the Section 30 Design Guidelines. Staff has not received any outside correspondence or comments regarding this request. Staff is recommending that the city council approve a one-year extension of time for tentative tract map number 33329, subject to the conditions of approval and based upon the content and findings in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Are there any questions from the council?
I do have one question. Did you say that these lots are not the right size? Can you hit me again with that?
They were, when they were approved, they complied with the standards at that time.
At that time?
Yes, at that time.
But not today?
Not today.
But it still is in effect at that time when they applied? Right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So if they, if they do not meet with this last request for extension and they have to reapply another time, then the adjustments will have to be made?
So if they don't, so if you guys don't approve this request, the map will expire. Their expiration day was in May. And even if you do approve this request, this is their last extension of time request. So if they don't record the map, it'll, the project will expire next year. And if they wish to pursue and resubmit, they will need to comply with the development standards at that time of the smittle.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
That was a good question. All right. Do you want me to make a motion?
Well, are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll close the audience comments and?
Well, there I go.
Okay.
So here I am. I will move that the city council approve a one-year extension of time for tentative tract map 33329, TTM3X33329, in parentheses, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings and content in the attached staff report.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we will now move on to item number 11. And this is going to be presented by Kofi Antabom. And he's the Director of Administrative Services. And also Robert Lee, who is the Assistant City Attorney. And this is so that the city of Rancho Mirage can conduct a public hearing to consider the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in support of financing certain of Eisenhower Medical Center's healthcare facilities. And thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, council. So this item is to hold a public hearing to help Eisenhower Medical Center issue tax-exempt bonds. This hearing is required under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, commonly referred to as a TEFFRA hearing. In order for Eisenhower Medical Center to issue tax-exempt bonds, the city of Rancho Mirage is required to, under this act, to hold a public meeting to provide members of the community an opportunity to speak on this item. The advantage of Eisenhower Medical Center issuing tax-exempt debt is that it lowers their cost of debt, thereby saving them money. This action before you this afternoon is to approve issuance of a new debt to finance the costs of acquisition, construction, equipment, and improvements of certain healthcare facilities on the Eisenhower Medical Center campus. The bonds to be issued by Eisenhower Medical Center are the sole responsibility of Eisenhower, and the city of Rancho Mirage will have no financial, legal, moral obligation, liability, or responsibility for these bonds in any manner. Outside of consulting, conducting the public hearing and adopting the attached resolution, there is no further involvement on behalf of the city of Rancho Mirage. This process is just a procedural step that is laid out within the law in order to allow Eisenhower to proceed with issuing tax-exempt bonds. Again, there is absolutely no fiscal responsibility to the city of Rancho Mirage. These bonds are solely Eisenhower's bonds. And Eisenhower, it's solely responsible for repayment of the bonds. Staff recommends that the city council conducts a public hearing and that the council approves the attached resolution. In the audience today, we have John Stoker, who is the Financial Advisor from California Municipal Finance Authority. And we also have Donna Connolly, who is the Controller from Eisenhower Medical Center. And that concludes my, my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. Any council questions?
Question. Kofi, even though the city of Rancho Mirage is not liable for these bonds, what type of wording goes on the bond to refer to the city of Rancho Mirage?
All right, so in the bond documents, there's going to be a specific section that will clearly states that the bonds are not the responsibility of the city of Rancho Mirage and that it's strictly the responsibility of Eisenhower Medical Center. So in the debt documents or the bond documents, there's going to be an explicit statement in there that says that the city is not responsible for these bonds. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? All right.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay, Ted?
In the past, possibly person from Eisenhower might answer this, or our city manager, has the prior bonds been rated? Have they had a rating of any kind?
Triple B.
My colleague said it was triple D.
B.
B. B. I mean, I'm sorry, triple B. Is that accurate?
Yes.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Answered my question.
All right, no further comments from the council or questions? Okay, we'll open it to the public comments. Anyone have any questions or comments? All right, seeing no, so we will close that portion of our meeting. And since we have already done number A, which is the city council conducting a public hearing, we will move on to item number B, and maybe somebody will make a motion in a second.
Sure.
That we adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, approving the issuance by the California Municipal Finance Authority of tax-exempt revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, equipping, and improvement of certain facilities for the benefit of Eisenhower Medical Center.
Second.
Okay, who made the second?
Councilmember Townsend.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we'll move on now to item number 12. And this will be presented by our Public Works Director, Jesse Eckenroth. And this is related to Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number 87-01, Final Engineers Annual Levy Report and Levy of Assessments, Fiscal Year 2019-20.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'll try and keep this short and sweet. In 1987, the city formed its first lighting and landscape district. In 1995, '96, the city consolidated the multiple districts into Landscape and Lighting District 8701, which currently has five special benefit zones and one citywide median zone. The district maintains landscape and lighting in each specific zone. And the zones within the district are assessed on a cost-recovery basis, assessing parcel owners for the associated maintenance costs of their specific zone. The citywide landscape and lighting zone, which covers the city medians, is assessed to parcel owners citywide. And the five special benefit zones within the district are assessed only to parcels receiving the direct and special benefit as determined by the original agreement between the developer and the city. To determine whether assessments need to be revised, the city contracts with Willdan Financial Services to prepare an engineer's annual levy report. The engineer's annual levy report factors the revenues and expenses associated with each zone and provides a cost-recovery estimate for each zone. The engineer's report is recommending the following. The citywide median zone to remain unchanged at $26.42. Zone A, which serves 40 parcels, has a modest increase of $7.70. Zone B, which serves 14 parcels, is to remain unchanged at $421. Zone C, D, and F all receive decreases. And again, the recommendations in the engineer's report are based on cost recovery and constitute minor adjustments. As required, a public hearing notice has been posted in the local newspaper noticing today's meeting. Staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing, invite testimony, and consider any written protests regarding the Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District 8701. Staff recommends that the city council adopt both resolutions attached to the staff report and direct the city clerk to file certified copies of the resolutions with the appropriate agency. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions from council? No. Any, anybody over here? Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, so the public hearing is now open. Are there any comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, approving the Final Engineers Annual Levy Report for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number 87-01, for full year 2019-20. B, adopt Resolution Number 209, 2019, next in order, ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting, Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number 87-01, for full year 2019/20. And C, direct the city clerk to file with the appropriate agencies certified copies of the above resolutions, as may be required, together with the company exhibits, attachments, and reports.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Sorry, motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we'll be moving on now to our action. Our action calendar. And item number 13. And this is the budget part of our agenda. And this will be handled by Joseph Carpenter, our finance manager. Welcome, Joseph.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Madam Mayor, before I hand it over to Joseph, I just wanted to make a few comments. You know, the budget process was kicked off in March by our city manager. And I would like to publicly say a thank you to Mr. Hegeman for his direction and input during this process. There have been several meetings that required discussions with various staff and, which has resulted in the proposed budget we are presenting this afternoon. And Isaiah's leadership has been crucial in that. So I just want to say thank you, Isaiah, in doing that. And then to our fiscal year 2019-2020 Budget Subcommittee, which comprises of Mayor Pro Tem Hobart and Councilmember Kite, I'd like to thank you all for your time and effort in reviewing the draft documents and your involvement in the process up to this point. This year's budget process was a little bit unique in that this is the first time we are preparing a budget, a two-year budget, through the city's new accounting system. And so it was more of a learning process for most of us. But I would like to thank all staff who participated in the process. And especially, I want to say a big thank you to Joseph Carpenter, our finance manager, for the many hours he spent outside, regular hours, mapping out all the numbers and text to ensure that the document is accurate and complete. Joseph, I want to say thank you. I do appreciate all the effort that you put in. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to you to present the budget.
Thank you, Kofi. Last month, the preliminary budget was distributed to the city council and made available to the public for review. On May 28, the city council held a study session to discuss the budget. Revisions proposed during the study session have been incorporated into the budget attached to the staff report and presented today. Today's presentation will provide a high-level summary of the city's two-year budget focusing on the 2019-2020 fiscal year. The resolutions you act on today will approve the fiscal year 1920 budget and tentatively approve the fiscal year 2021 budget, subject to council review. approve the fiscal year 2021 budget, subject to council review. The operating budget includes most revenues and all routine expenses associated with running the city, such as electricity, building maintenance, and personnel costs. As shown on your screen, highlighted in blue, the fiscal year 1920 budget includes approximately $28.2 million in operating revenue and $27.2 million in operating expenditures for approximately $1 million in operating revenues in excess of expenditures. The city will utilize $150,000 in contributions from reserves to fund an update to the Highway 111 specific plans, which will increase the projected surplus for fiscal year 1920 to approximately $1.18 million. The fiscal year 2021 budget includes approximately $28.5 million in operating revenue and $28.1 million in operating expenditures for approximately $450,000 in operating revenues in excess of expenditures. Again, the city will utilize $150,000 in contributions from reserves to fund the update to the Highway 111 specific plans, which will increase the projected surplus for the fiscal year to a little under $600,000. I apologize, I'm having some trouble here. The next two slides in my presentation will provide an overview of the operating revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 1920. So where does the money come from? The city tracks general fund operating revenue in more than 40 accounts, which have been categorized into the eight categories on this chart. Comprising almost $15 million of the operating revenue budget, transient occupancy tax, and sales tax make up 53% of the city's revenues. With more than 50% of general fund revenues coming from tourist-driven taxes, it is important to understand the city is susceptible to changes in the economy, which is one of the reasons the city created the prudent reserve. How is the money spent? Approximately 41% or $11.1 million of the general fund operating expenditure budget is dedicated to public safety. It should be noted, this amount only represents police services and the subsidy required of the general fund to balance the fire tax fund. The remaining budgets are broken down by function or department and include executive services, administrative services, land use, public works, special programs, and marketing. Non-departmental or general government are items that cannot be associated with any one specific department. The capital or non-operating budget for fiscal year 1920 includes approximately $6 million in non-operating revenue and approximately $7.7 million in non-operating expenditures for spending of approximately $1.7 million. After accounting for the previously mentioned $1 million operating surplus, the city is projected to spend approximately $740,000 in reserves. It is normal to see a deficit or spending when discussing the capital budget, as it indicates an agency is spending its reserves and investing funds into the community. Significant capital projects for the partially -- that are partially funded from the general fund for the fiscal year include the Frank Sinatra Bridge and the Traffic Signal Synchronization Project. For fiscal year 2021, there are approximately $880,000 in non-operating revenues, approximately $1.6 million in non-operating expenditures for reserve spending of $765,000. After accounting for the approximate $440,000 of operating surplus, the city is projected to spend approximately $320,000 in reserves. This concludes my brief presentation this afternoon. Thank you for your consideration, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joseph. Is there anyone on the council that would like to make comment or ask questions? On this side? No. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Great job in the presentation. The staff has just done an outstanding job here.
Yes, we all agree on that one. And hearing the presentation from our city manager, Isaiah, makes everything so clear and so easy to understand. It's a delight to hear him speak and keep us informed. Okay.
Not easy to understand.
[laughing].
It's over 300 pages. Of course not.
Yes, okay. So we'll open up to the public for any comments or questions. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session and ask for a motion in a second.
All right, I will make a motion that the city council, the City of Rancho Mirage, and the Board of Directors for the City of Rancho Mirage Housing Authority, Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, and City of Rancho Mirage Community Service District, adopt the resolutions identified as Resolutions A through F.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. So now we'll move on to item number... This is the annual levy of special taxes and assessments for fire protection and prevention in Community Facilities Districts Number 1 and 2.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and council. Annually, various assessments and special taxes must be confirmed by the city council and then submitted to the Riverside County Tax Collector's Office to be included in the tax roll. The three resolutions attached to your staff report would approve special assessments to fund public safety, that is, police and fire and library services. The fire and fire exercise special assessments are $60 and $13.66 per dwelling unit, respectively. Due to Prop 218 restrictions, these assessments have never changed since they were adopted and will remain the same for the fiscal year 2019 and 2020. The Community Facilities District Number 1, which funds police and fire assessment, is determined by a mathematical formula that was established by the Enabling Ordinance Number 485. That formula looks at actual expenses and revenue generated for public safety and comes up with a net cost that is then apportioned out among the various parcels. The fiscal year 2019-2020 assessment for residential dwelling unit is proposed to be levied at The commercial rate, which is based on square footage rather than a unit basis, is proposed to be levied at 68 cents. The Community Facilities District Number 2, which is the Western Vacation Club, was established in 2001 to fund library services. This assessment is subject to annual increase to reflect the change in Consumer Price Index. The CPI change was 3.05%. Therefore, the rates for CFD Number 2 will increase from the current $36.59 to $37.71 per accessible week. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolutions, which will then be forwarded to the county for placement on the 2019-2020 tax roll. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. Any questions from the council? No comments, no questions? Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, we will close the audience portion right now and move on to a vote. May I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to the city council approve the annual levy of special taxes and assessments for fire protection and prevention in Community Facilities Districts Number 1 and 2, along with the appropriate resolutions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. All right, we will move on now to item number 15, and this is another item being presented by Jesse Eckenroth, our Public Works Director. And this is related to -- it's a resolution ordering the levy and collection of the park maintenance special tax pursuant to Ordinance Number 685 for fiscal year 1920. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. 1998, Rancho Mirage residents approved a special park tax to fund the maintenance of Rancho Mirage city parks, Ordinance 685. Ordinance 685 established the original levy amount at $18.96 and allowed for an annual adjustment limited to CPI to keep pace with maintenance costs. The tax park -- the park tax is levied equally to each residential dwelling unit within the city regardless of value. Commercial, recreational, and undeveloped land is levied according to an equivalent dwelling unit calculation, as shown on page 1 of the resolution. The county levies the roll and collects the park tax on behalf of the city. The city receives park tax revenue from the county and records the revenue in the Parkland Fund, which is used exclusively for city parks. The current park tax is $30.60 per equivalent dwelling unit. As approved by the voters, the park tax can be adjusted annually according to CPI. Staff is recommending that the city council adjust the park tax by 83 cents per equivalent dwelling unit to keep pace with CPI. The 83-cent tax increase will adjust the park tax from $30.60 to $31.43. For fiscal year 1920, the Parkland Fund is budgeted to deficit spend, so the proposed park tax increase will help to decrease the deficit margin. And though 83 cents is a minimal amount, it's important that the city keep up adjusting for CPI so that we don't get behind on our maintenance. So staff is recommending that the city council approve the attached resolution to adjust the 2019-2020 park tax based on CPI increase. concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jesse, I have a question. In regard to the expansion of the parks, does that impact this fee?
No, it doesn't. The fee can only be adjusted according to CPI, so it does not impact the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion.
Public comments? No comments? I see none. Moving back, as we are closing the public comments, and call for a vote. Someone would make a motion?
Richard.
Love to make the motion.
Be my guest.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, ordering the levy and collection of the park maintenance special tax pursuant to Ordinance Number 685 and fiscal year 2019-2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
This is like that popcorn game that we played in school where you...
Motion carries 5-0.
Councilmember Kite, since you read last, you get to pick the next person that makes the motion.
I like that.
Okay. Kristi, did you get everyone's votes?
Yes. Motion carried 5-0.
Okay, thank you.
Isaiah, that was cute. I love that.
Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to...
Do we have to move on to item B on that item?
I believe that was already covered. Let's go back and see.
Did your motion include item B?
Yes, it does.
It does, okay.
You can take one action.
Okay.
Right.
So we're good.
So just so everyone knows, we are also directing the city clerk to file certified copies of the above resolution and accompanying exhibits, attachments, and reports with the appropriate agencies as required.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. All right, now we'll move on to item number 16. Okay, and this is another one from Jesse Eckenroth.
Jesse, you're busy.
Yes.
The last one for me today. Madam Mayor, City Council, the County of Riverside administers the collection of taxes and assessments on behalf of the City of Rancho Mirage. The city makes adjustments to taxes and assessments within the city on an annual basis, as we're doing today. The adjustments made by the city to taxes and assessments are submitted to the county for inclusion on the tax roll. The city submits a certificate of compliance to the county listing the districts and funds that the city maintains. The certificate of compliance serves as a mechanism to formally establish compliance with Proposition 28, and city staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or is designated to execute and submit to the county a certificate of compliance with Proposition 218. That concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay, any questions from the audience? All right, we'll close that portion of our meeting and move on to a vote. May I have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the certificates of compliance for fiscal year 2019-2020 tax roll.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, now we're moving on to item number 17, and this is going to be handled by William Enos, a city engineer. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You are welcome.
Members of council, first slide, please. This project is the undergrounding of the Southern California Edison distribution lines along Vista del Sol, and that would be from Puerto Cielo north for a distance of approximately 900 feet. This is installing the conduits and substructure necessary for Edison to complete their portion of the work, which is installing, actually pulling the cables and undergrounding the lines. The existing pole line along -- second slide, please. The second -- I'm sorry, the existing pole line along Vista del Sol has both the high voltage transmission lines, which are the top tier you see in the slide, as well as the lower lines, the distribution lines. This project will underground just the distribution lines because of the very high cost of undergrounding the transmission lines. Even though the -- next slide, please. Even though these power pole line will remain, the lower, more visible distribution lines will be undergrounded and will improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood, decrease the negative impact of those power lines. This project was put out to bid on April 12, and bids were open on May 13. And the lowest responsible and responsive bidder was TriStar Contracting, Inc., for the amount of $196,886. And TriStar was checked out. They've actually worked for us before on a project and done a great job for us, and they certainly have all the licensing necessary. After completion of TriStar's work, then Edison will start their portion of work, which will actually, as I said before, pulling the cables and installing the equipment necessary to complete the undergrounding. And we have an invoice attached to your packet in the amount of $146,923.84, which will also be part of the project. Totalling those up, as well as some inspection costs of $9,000, brings the project total to $352,809. And also, because an adjacent developer will rebate a portion of the cost in the amount of $80,000, the city's net cost will be approximately $273,000. There are -- budget funds have been set aside in the fiscal year 1920 budget from the development impact fee to pay for this project, and no budget adjustment is necessary for the work. Staff recommends awarding the contract for the installation of the conduits and substructure to TriStar in the amount of $196,886, and staff requests authority to pay Southern California Edison the amount of $146,923 for their portion of the work. That concludes my report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right.
Phil, I have a question. Could you go back to that last slide that you had showing the poles?
Josh, could you go back? There we go.
Of those lines, which ones are going to remain and which ones are going down?
The -- on that slide there, it's -- may we go back to the previous slide? It's easier to see on -- there we go. On that slide, you see the very top lines, there's a post that goes to the left, and then one goes left and right. Those three will remain. Those are the three lines of the high voltage lines, the very top. The lower cross arm that goes horizontal with the four lines on it, as well as you can see a faint line even below that, there's a communications line that will also come down as part of this. So the cross arm with the four lines on it, the lower ones, will come down. The three at the very top will remain.
When this job is done, we're probably going to get a lot of questions as to, "Oh, I thought you were undergrounding all the poles," and actually, we're undergrounding about half.
Yeah.
Not the poles, but the arms.
The power poles will remain, but the lower arms will be removed. But again, the higher lines will remain. What we've noticed, that there are some locations to see where those high voltage lines remain because of landscaping the projects, and they kind of disappear. They're up so high. They are still there, and it certainly would be better to have them gone. Unfortunately, the city, starting back in 2008, looked into undergrounding those lines. Very, very expensive. And we looked again in 2010 at that cost that jumped from $5 million to $8.7 million in those short two years. It's very expensive, and at this point, our municipal code requires it actually to -- for the new developers to underground distribution adjacent to the project. So that's the course we've been following.
So what would the cost be now if they had done their ground?
Please repeat, I'm sorry.
Well, you were just saying how the cost had gone up in 2008, and so what would the cost now be if they had done?
Today, that's a good question, and I did investigate that. You know, we just had Polte's Undergrounding completed. Now, it was a much larger project. It was about 4,000 feet of two circuits, so about 8,000 feet of one circuit equivalent to. And based on their cost, it was about -- undergrounding their project was about $1,000 bucks a foot, is what it came to. And so our project has approximately 5,000 feet, which would be about $5 million for the high voltage lines. Now, it would be additional for the distribution, so I would estimate, I would say probably the 8.7 million they gave us in 2010 is probably ballpark still, based on today's costs.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone on this side?
Good. Good.
All right, any questions from the audience? All right, we'll close the public part of our meeting and move on to a vote.
I will make a motion, the city council, A, award the contract for installation of conduits and substructures on Vista del Sol from Puerto Cielo to 900 feet north to the lowest responsibility and responsive bidder, TriStar Contracting Incorporated, in the amount of $196,886. And B, authorize payment of SCE invoice in the amount of $146,923.84 for labor and material costs and cable, equipment makeup, switching, and all work necessary to complete the undergrounding of the distribution lines.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Mayor and council, I just wanted to take a second to thank Bill Enos. Bill, thank you for your hard work on this project. You know, we encountered an issue, I should say, the developer encountered an issue, and Bill came up with a creative solution to solve this problem to everybody's satisfaction. So Bill, you've been doing this great work for years for the city, but thank you for your work on this project.
Yes.
He's a great city engineer.
The best.
Thank you, Bill. All right, moving on to item number 18, the contract for purchase of new medic unit, and this is going to be handled by Tiana McAmol. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The first item I'll be discussing today is a contract for the purchase of a new medic unit. The city owns the following three ambulances shown on the screen, Medic 50, Medic 69, and Medic 269. And as you can see on the screen, one medic looks a little bit older than the others. The recommended and adopted replacement cycle for all Cove ambulances is seven years, five of those being first roll. Medic 50 and Medic 69 were purchased in 2016 and have a replacement year of 2023. Both medics have a current mileage under 30,000. Medic 269 was remounted and refurbished in 2007 and has a total mileage of a little under 100,000. Medic 269 is the city's only reserve ambulance should Medic 50 or 69 break down and need repairs. In its current state, Medic 269 does not conform to our standards and is overdue for replacement. Staff is recommending the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-450 High-Efficiency Diesel Supercab Chassis and Type 1 12-foot generator-powered module to be placed into service as Medic 69. The current Medic 69 would be placed into reserve status for the next four years. This ensures that the city has a reliable reserve ambulance should Medic 50 or the new Medic 69 break down or need repairs. Fraser Ambulance has provided a quote just shy of $240,000, which includes an estimated trade-in value of $6,000 for the current Medic 269 to offset the cost of the new ambulance. There are sufficient funds in the public safety reserve to cover this cost. It is staff's recommendation that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Fraser for the purchase of a new medic unit to replace the current Rancho Mirage Reserve known as Medic 269 in an amount not to exceed $239,959.25. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions. And Battalion Chief Beverlin is here with us as well to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiana. All right, any questions from the city council?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Any, what questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session and ask for a vote.
I'll make a motion that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Fraser for the purchase of a new medic unit to replace the current Rancho Mirage Reserve known as Medic 269.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. And this next item is item number 19, and it is also going to be presented by Tiana McAmol. She's our senior management analyst, and also Isaiah Hagerman, who's our city manager. And this is regarding an expanded automated license plate reader system, which is really exciting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So last year, the city authorized the purchase of two ALPR systems that were installed on two of our police vehicles. What these systems do is they are a camera system that take pictures, images of license plates, and then it takes that image and it converts it into letters and numbers. So the actual image is not stored, it just takes that image and converts it into letters and numbers so it can read the license plate. And what it allows, or the advantage to these systems, is obviously that camera and that computer system can read every license plate that passes that police vehicle when a deputy cannot accomplish that or any human. When we installed these two systems on our two vehicles last year, we've already had a bunch of good cases where this system will alert the deputy if it passes a vehicle where that license plate is tagged for any reason. So the most common reason that we run into is a vehicle has been reported stolen. And it doesn't matter where this vehicle's been reported stolen out of. This database is uniform across all police agencies. It also includes if there's stolen license plates, Amber alerts, and essentially, it just automatically alerts the deputy to what the issue is with that vehicle that they just passed. So over this past year, the Rancho Mirage Police have had some great stops. We've recovered stolen property. One of the notable results of this camera system was a stolen vehicle out of LA, and then in the course of that, they also recovered stolen property, and some of that property included weapons. So who knows what you prevented by doing that? So we would like to expand the system and its use by our police department as a tool to help the deputies better enforce laws within our city. The contract that is being proposed is with Vigilant Solutions, and that is the provider of the county. So with this, this is the county system. The system can only be authorized by law enforcement, and there is the required audit trail, and officers can only access this within their official capacity to do an investigation. The great thing about this is the proposed expansion would include two more of our police vehicles, and then also two fixed systems on our streets. So as cars are driving down the street in our major intersections, it would also read those license plates, and if a stolen vehicle were to pass through those cameras, it would alert the deputies on duty, and the deputies could go find that vehicle and commence enforcement. The proposed cost for the two additional police vehicles and the two additional fixed systems is $121,014.97. And of that, the Aguacaliente Band of Quia Indians gave us, the city, a grant for $54,738. So the actual city cost, the net cost to the city after the grant from the tribe, thank you for your support of our public safety, the net cost to the city would be just under $66,300. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council?
Isaiah, how many cars will now have the reader system?
After this, four.
That's for the full three cities?
No, this is specific to Rancho Mirage.
Wow. That's pretty good. Congratulations on that. Great.
It's a great system, and it's something that we started out to kind of explore, to say, what are the results with two units? The results were great, so we're expanding the system. And I would imagine, after we get some experience with these additional units, if it's something that continues to provide value and into our community and to public safety, we will likely be back in the future with future requests to expand the system. And if you think of it like a big net, eventually, you could cast a net over your community, and it's a great tool for our law enforcement.
Very good. Isaiah, I know you went into a lot of background on this when we had our chat. You can't really go into it all, but what has been done in catching people is amazing.
Yeah, great use of technology for our public safety.
Okay, no further comments from-
Just one question, Isaiah. How can we, or the police department, inform in an informal way the public that we've bought more of these vehicles so that they can serve as some kind of a deterrent effect in addition to catching somebody, maybe preventing crime in the city?
Yeah, so that's really on the city, so that's part of the city's communication of, this is part of our public safety and the higher level of service that we provide to our communities. So the last time we purchased these units, Rancho Mirage was actually the first within the entire county to bring on this new Vigilant system. So the county, all the contract agencies in the unincorporated area were kind of looking at us because we were the first ones to implement with Vigilant, this new service provider, and this new type of camera that is more sophisticated. Based on the results, I know the sheriff's department has had meetings with other communities and used us as the example. So when we do actions like this, just like when we added the three additional police officers about a year ago, we communicate that via RM Insiders and press releases and things of that nature, just to educate the community on all the things the city does to try to protect them.
Very good.
So we will do the same. We will likely highlight this within the next RM Insider, which is mailed to all residents.
Make a motion.
Okay. It's really quite a remarkable system that we're able to put together, and I wanted to make note because on page 19, item 19-2, it says in October of 2018, the city purchased two of the ALPR systems, and since installation, these systems have scanned 21,374 license plates in the city, and out of these scans, the Rancho Mirage Police Department received 29 hits. Of these hits, eight were stolen plates and three were stolen vehicles. So we really know how they work, and we're thrilled to be able to add a few more.
It's always a great success story when we are able to return somebody's stolen property.
Absolutely. All right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, did someone make a motion?
Not yet.
Okay, well, may I have a motion?
Richard, you want to make a motion? You want me to do it?
He gets to pick this time.
Yeah, come on. No, let me just say one thing, but I am asked so many times by people who watch us on television, and here's what they say. How do you guys decide who is going to make these motions? Do you draw straws? Do you fight about it? Do you pick numbers? And I say, no, we just stare each other down. So we do have a good rapport from people who watch us out there, how we pull this off.
It's magic.
Okay.
Magic, magic.
All right, well with this-
Somebody make the motion, will you?
All right, so with this ongoing great system-
Okay, so I'll make a motion. The city council authorized the city manager to enter into an enterprise service agreement and purchase two fixed automated license plate readers, camera systems, and two mobile automated license plate readers, camera system for Rancho Mirage Police Department. Yes.
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Thank you, Kristi. So now we're moving on to item number 20, and this is also going to be presented by Tina McAmol and Isaiah Hagerman, and it's a consideration of a donation to Eisenhower Health.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The last item I'll be discussing is $100,000 donation to Eisenhower Health in support of the established cumulative goal of donating $1 million in a 10-year period. Over the years, the city and Eisenhower Health have forged a positive and effective working relationship for the betterment of our city. They have a long history of medical excellence, and a few recent awards are displayed on the screen. On June 21, 2018, the city council authorized the first donation of $100,000 to Eisenhower Health. Given the significance of Eisenhower Health's impact as a community asset in terms of the quality of medical care provided, economic contributions, and services that promote the good health and well-being of Rancho Mirage residents, the continued success of Eisenhower Health and support from the city is warranted. Approval of today's proposed donation would emphasize and reinforce the city's support of this outstanding healthcare campus. And thanks to you, the city council, the city has been well-managed financially, which has resulted in city budgets that operate with the surplus and healthy reserve balances. This $100,000 donation will be paid out of the budget surplus, and at no point will city services be reduced or sacrificed for their donation. We wish to strengthen our bonds with Eisenhower Health and demonstrate the city's commitment to the success of the critical community asset that Eisenhower is. It is staff's recommendation that the city council authorize $100,000 donation to Eisenhower Health in support of the established cumulative goal of donating $1 million in a 10-year period. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiana. Okay, any questions from council?
Nope. Good.
Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll close that audience portion. Yes?
Probably the most important part of this issue is the statement that at no time or point will the city's services be reduced to sacrifice for this donation.
Absolutely.
So we're going to make sure that these are excess dollars, and the City of Rancho Mirage residents will not be negatively impacted by us giving this donation.
Okay, thank you for that point. And I think another interesting point is that Eisenhower is the Coachella Valley's only non-for-profit hospital, and I think that's something that most people don't know about, and it's quite a feather in our cap and theirs, so.
Now, go ahead. I was merely going to say, in addition, it's the largest employer in the City of Rancho Mirage.
Go.
So Richard?
Okay.
Okay.
Is everybody ready?
We are ready.
Go.
Okay, the city council authorized a $100,000 donation to Eisenhower Health in support of established cumulative goal of donating $1 million in the next 10-year period.
Okay, and I will second that. So please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Kristi. And since we have already taken action on item 21, which was the presentation by Dr. Lyons, we're going to move on now to closed session items with Steve Q.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fortunately, we don't need a motion for this, but the council's got to confer, meeting closed session, the confer of legal counsel pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1 regarding the case known as Horizon Pacific Rancho Mirage LLC versus City of Rancho Mirage. The council will also confer legal counsel regarding three potential initiation of litigation items pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4.
We would need a motion if the motion were to prevent the city attorney from ad-libbing as much as he did.
No.
It has to be on the agenda, though.
Right. Okay, thank you, Steve. And I will adjourn to June 27. Please take notice of this next regular meeting of the city council. It will be held on June 27 at 1:00 p.m. Put it on your calendar, please, and just make note that the meeting on June 20, which would normally be our regular meeting, will take place on the Thursday, June 27 at 1:00 p.m., and we will see you all there. Thank you.
What about July 1?
Okay, now we recess into closed session.